I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all of the trustees are present, and I will ask for a motion to amend the agenda to move personnel actions to right now.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, for personnel actions, we have a recommendation for a fire chief. Mr. Wright, take it from here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. So, you know, I've had the honor and privilege of serving here in Union Township for the better part of almost seventeen years and getting the opportunity to come back. And it's really an exciting opportunity. One of the first things that I get to bring to the board at my first meeting is the privilege to present a candidate for the position of fire chief. Union Township has had a storied history here with fire service, really second to none in that regard, as far as I'm concerned, and I think that we are a regional leader on that. So, you know, we have longstanding fire chief here, big shoes to fill, and I'm pleased this evening to bring to you our very own Lieutenant Austin Clements to be considered for the position of fire chief this evening. Born and raised in Union Township, has served in the fire service for more than thirteen years. He has been on the department here in various capacities, first as a firefighter, paramedic, and has also served us honorably and with distinction as a lieutenant for more than two years here. You know, I have an appreciation for the fact that Austin has a deep understanding for the essential work of our fire department and, more importantly, the expectations of our community. I think, you know, he's demonstrated, you know, a commitment to success by progressively moving up in the ranks in the department, and I think that those motivational skills and those leadership skills will complement our organizational structure and our leadership team here. So, I believe he's provided collaborative oversight in his various roles here. I think he understands both the connection to, you know, the line-level personnel and the expectations of what the leadership team here, and ultimately, the expectations of the policy directives that the Board of Trustees establishes and sets. So, you know, I look forward, you know, hopefully, upon, you know, successful vote of the Board of Trustees to welcome Mr. Clements as our new fire chief. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
That'd be great. Okay, could I have a motion to appoint Lieutenant Austin Clements to the position of fire chief effective February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four at the annual salary of one hundred twenty thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Loeb, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a, Mr. Clements is an excellent candidate to come forward for this position. I'm excited. From our time in the community and hearing him speak of his vision and positive change and continued growth for the fire department, and the ability to have the leadership skills, emotional intelligence there, because, you know, leadership skills is one thing, but it's the empathy and the understanding within the community, and it's being able to take problems, policies, and having politics aligned to where we can really move things forward together. So, I'm excited to welcome him to the leadership team, but first, you know, I think, you know, we've probably all engaged with him over the years here, but also, we've got a lot of members from the community out here tonight, and a couple news crews out here as well. So, I think we'd love to get to know him even better on a personal level, introduce him more to the community, and I'll hand it off to trustee Joe Dills to dig into that a little bit.
Mr. Dills, go ahead.
So, before I say anything personally, Austin, can you do me something? So, you have Denise, right, your four kiddos?
Yes.
Okay, so you tell us real quick, all your family members and who else is here to support you?
Yeah, so my wife Denise is here, our four kids, so Penelope's my oldest on the end there, Georgia, and then my twins that are five, Blake and Bo, are sitting here. I got my nephew, nephew James also snuck up to the front row. My mom and dad are here, Jock and Kathy here in the second row, my brother, little brother Andrew, his wife Ally with their two daughters here. And then my oldest brother Adam and his wife Alie are in the second row. I got, I see a number of aunts and uncles here as well, some cousins scattered, maybe some family in the back row here. So, a lot of family support here tonight.
I love it. I love it. And then, obviously, all of your brothers and sister in the fire family as well, so they're all here to support you. So, would you like me to kick things off?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, first off, Austin, before I talk about you, I'd like to commend, you know, the top three finalists that Mr. Wright presented to us. Also was Mark Fife and then also Matt Terrill, and I wanted to commend them both. They did a great job interviewing, and really, it was, it was almost a three-headed, you know, coin flip for us. And so, but both those gentlemen did a fine job and made great cases as well, so just wanted to commend them as well. But Austin, I think you do a phenomenal job at, you're one of the guys with your firefighters, but at the same time, I think you can also understand the business side of it. You know, you understand the firefighters, of their needs and their wants, but also you can balance that with the needs and wants of what the taxpayers and the residents are willing to, you know, pay and give for that. So, there's a fine balance there, but I think as far as direction and leadership of the future of our fire department, I think you're gonna do a great job, there's no doubt. And I want to say this, you know, don't be afraid to fail. Don't be. It's gonna be okay. You know, you have the full backing of this board, you've got the full backing of our administrator, and of course, our fiscal officer, and it's gonna be okay. New, fresh ideas, I'm excited for that, and I think you're gonna do very well. You're a man of valor, you displayed honesty and integrity, but also, you're a man that thinks outside the box, and I'm excited for those new, fresh ideas to come. But, you know, most importantly, you've got a lot of firefighters that are here, and they are seasoned more than you. And so, it's okay to ask their thoughts, their opinions, seek their wisdom. So, but I'm excited. I'll leave you with this. And I said the same thing to Chief Reese when he first got, "I'm gonna charge you, I'm gonna challenge you to..." We have one female firefighter, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
One. And so, I'm gonna challenge you on your recruiting efforts to change that. And then also, you know, we need more, you know, just balanced folks of, you know, different cultures and, you know, to come to Union Township. So, I'm gonna challenge you with that, but I'm excited for you. I want you to enjoy this night. You, think about this, you only get so many of these moments in your lifetime. You only get so many of them. This is one of them. So, tonight, you'll have the camera crews on you tonight, but enjoy this moment. Soak it in, and then tomorrow, you hit the ground running. So, it's an honor to vote for you, sir. I'm glad to have you on the team, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Sir.
Hi, Mr. Clements, before we met Friday, I didn't have any preconceived notions about you, one way or the other, just didn't know. I did know one of the competitors, of course, Mr. Fife, you know, he's been around for a long time and has done a great job as interim chief. You know, you really knocked my socks off in the interview, very, very impressive. The way you present yourself, your professionalism, your ideas, and, you know, you impressed my two colleagues as well. And for the audience, we had executive session Friday to interview the three candidates for fire chief. And based on that discussion that we had, our administrator, reading the room, decided to bring Austin here to us to consider for a final up or down vote this evening. With that, any other final comments before we vote? Mr. Loeb, anything? We ready to go?
Just very excited for it. Just reiterate that fact of sometimes it is definitely okay to fail fast, because you learn from that. It's kind of to get traction to move anywhere, you gotta break a little glass and clean it up. But I'll tell you, the community, they're excited for the direction that this township has continued to go, and you're part of that leadership team, join us with it now. And yeah, so you're absolutely charged to take care of your fire department, and you're gonna be in a critical role in between all of us. So, we thank you, and we're charging for it.
I'm good.
Final words, Mr. Dill?
We ready to go.
Yes, sir, we're good.
Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead and vote after the vote. Do you have any words?
At the end?
Good point.
At the end?
Yeah. You gonna do the vote?
I'm gonna put my foot in my mouth here before you vote.
Get through a vote first?
Yes.
All right. Look like you're ready to go.
Have to make sure you've got at least two votes up here. I think he's gonna be okay. So, after the vote, then, we'll bring you up, your family, we're gonna do photos, we're gonna pause the meeting for whatever length of time that is, five, ten minutes, whatever it is, and then we'll continue after that. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. So, go ahead, tell us what you want us to know.
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah. Chief Clements?
All right, so, wow, appreciated, thank you. It was a very special night for me and my family. I had to write some stuff down, because obviously, it's a very important night for not only me, but for the township and the fire department as well. So, I didn't wanna miss anything in this speech here. So, extremely honored, humbled, and excited to stand in front of you as the fire chief of the Union Township Fire Department. I want to thank the Board of Trustees, Mr. Becker, Mr. Dills, Mr. Loeb, and the Township Administrator, Mr. Corey Wright, for trusting me to lead this department. I appreciate it. As they mentioned previously, there were several internal candidates. They were of very high quality. I know the decision was not easy. I appreciate the support, professionalism that they've shown through this process, and I look forward to working with them going forward. I also look forward to working with the other great departments of this township, especially the Service Department and the Police Department. I look forward to building the relationships with Mr. Taylor from the Service Department and Chief Reese of the Police Department, and supporting their departments in any way that I can. If you look around the room, it's pretty evident that I have a pretty incredible support team. I'm extremely appreciative that you've all taken a little bit of your time this evening to come and support me. My team starts with my parents, my mom and dad, who are here in the second row this evening. They set the foundation and molded me into the man that I've become today. I appreciate the love and support you've shown me, as well as my three brothers, two of which are here tonight our entire lives. You have shown us firsthand, if we put the work in, we can achieve our goals. You've taught us how to love unconditionally and how to respect and care for others, and I can't thank you enough. While there are many people in the fire service that deserve a lot of credit for my success, I want to acknowledge a few of them tonight. Chief Josh Augustine of Washington Township Fire Department, Chief Augustine wasn't able to make it tonight, but he was my first lieutenant as I entered the fire service. He saw my potential, took me under his wing, and really showed me what a true leader looks like. Somewhat passionate about the job, passionate about the men and women who worked beside him, and he ensured everyone understood the whys and hows of firefighting operations. He has become a great friend and mentor over the years. I wouldn't be standing up here today if it wasn't for Chief Stan Eimling, giving me the opportunity to move back home and work for Union Township. Chief Eimling and Chief Mark Fife gave me the opportunity to lead my own crew, promoted me to the rank of lieutenant, and I'll be forever grateful for that. To Matt Losi, my first lieutenant here at Union Township, Lieutenant Losi standing in the back. Lieutenant Losi welcomed me onto his crew, and he's had my back since day one. He's always put his crew first, man, we've had some good times together. I've learned so much from your leadership, and I appreciate your continued support. To the boots on the ground, the men and women of Union Township Fire Department. Your support here tonight, and the calls, text messages that I've received over the last couple days, means the world to me. And you all are the biggest asset to Union Township Fire Department. This community is blessed with the best. These men and women spend twenty-four hours a day, multiple times a week, serving this community. They miss holidays, kids' events, and other life events. And they don't complain. I thank for all the hard work that you put in, and I'm looking forward to leading you, helping you grow, and watching you succeed over the years. Lastly, most importantly, my wife Denise. When I threw out the idea of me applying for this position, I wasn't exactly sure the response I would get, mainly because with this role, I'll be able to come home every night, and she's gotten used to the years of having the king-size bed to herself every now and again. But I shouldn't have been surprised when her response was, "Absolutely." I couldn't ask for a more supportive wife, who've helped me drive my career. You didn't bat an eye when I decided that with four kids, under the age of five, I wanted to pursue my bachelor's degree. Things at home going forward are gonna be a little bit different, but I couldn't do it without you. Thanks for always pushing me to achieve what you knew I was capable of. To my kids, Penelope, Georgia, Blake and Bo, I know you didn't have much of a choice, but I appreciate you being here tonight. Being your dad is my greatest joy. With that being said, I thank you all for your support here tonight. The future is bright here for Union Township and the Union Township Fire Department. It's an honor, but I gotta get going, because I gotta get to work in the morning. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, folks, we're gonna resume the meeting. You're welcome to stay if you wish. Now, we'll get to it later.
I would let him go, baby. Thank you, good to see you too, Kathy.
Are we ready to get started again? Guys, we ready to get started again?
Yep.
Okay, folks, public comment's gonna be coming up in a few minutes. There are cards in the back of the room, so go ahead and grab those as you need them, and fill those out and bring them forward, and we'll get you for public comment. But the next thing on our agenda is correspondence. Mr. Campbell, what do you have?
So, I have quite a few today. First one is a thank you card. Says, "Thank you for taking the time to show the Girl Scout Troop four zero six oh eight around the civic center and letting us participate in a meeting. We appreciate you," and all the girls signed it.
That's nice.
Second, I have a, an announcement for the twenty twenty-four District Advisory and Council Meeting. Second, I have a, an announcement for the 2024 District Advisory and Council Meeting. It's a March 21st, 2024. And this is a, from the Board of Health, they're asking that any and all the trustees and Mr. Wright participate. So that is March 21st, 2024, 6:30. So you guys can let me know if you're available to attend. We can fill that card out and I'll get that back to them. They want that back by the 7th.
I'll be there, Mr. Campbell.
Okay.
I will not be.
Next, I have a letter from the Farm Bureau. And they're just reaching out with any issues that the township might have. Just letting us know that they're willing to help. We're not very farm heavy, but if something would be of interest, they have volunteered to help us. And they're having a 4H meeting, or a meeting in the 4H hall, I'm sorry, at the Ag Center Complex at the Claremont OSU Extension Office on Thursday, April the 4th at 8:30 a.m. If anyone would like to attend that. Lastly, I've got a liquor permit. And it's a new one for NKRP Liquor LLC doing businesses, Ohio Pike Wine and Spirits. 919 Ohio Pike, 125 Suite C, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45245. I have a couple accompanying letters. One from Mr. McCormick certifying that they're permitted to, this use is permitted in their district. And the other from the Police Department that they have no objections. And that concludes all the correspondence. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, a presentation, Lucas Kruger and Bill Bresser. Come on up. You got the floor.
Mr. Becker, if I, if I may. As you well know, back in November, we had a contest within the Police Department. And in the spirit of raising some money for a good cause and having some fun, we allowed our guys to grow beards under one requirement that they kick in a little bit of money that would benefit a local organization. I'm happy to say our guys rallied, our female police officers even rallied, they didn't grow beards, but they did donate. We were able to raise a significant amount of money. And better than that, we were able to find a worthy organization right here in our own backyard with the Boys and Girls Club of Cincinnati over at Mount Carmel. And Mr. Bresser, Mr. Kruger here tonight to accept a check on behalf of the Police, Union Township Police Association from Lieutenant Josh Hines.
Oh, it's awesome. Well, thank you for that introduction.
Thank you so much. Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I just wanna, it's a pleasure to be here, it's great to see what we just saw. Especially want to thank Chief Reese for joining our East Side Board as well. If you guys don't know, Boys and Girls Clubs is so much more than just a rec center. It's a comprehensive youth development agency. It's all free for everybody who joins and I'd love to give you all a tour sometime if you're interested. My name's Bill Bresser, by the way, I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs, Lucas.
And thank you Lieutenant Hines, thanks for the board providing the opportunity. And again, thank you for the funding. It helps make our mission possible. And I do just want to say, you know, he stole a lot of words from me, but everything he said is true. And we don't take the responsibility that we have to the kids of this township lightly. And ultimately, any kid that comes to the Claremont County Club, the Union Township Club, the Jeff Wyler Boys and Girls Club, we're gonna uphold our mission to make them caring, productive, and responsible citizens. So thank you so much for the funding, we really appreciate it.
If I did mention, Mr. Becker, we were able to raise $2,500. So again, we're happy to give that to the Boys and Girls Club. We know we'll put it to great use.
All right. Yeah. So I'm in the lead Claremont Leadership Program and Lucas and I are actually in the same class. And so we've gotten to know each other quite well. And actually, Mr. McCormick is as well down there. And I'll tell you this much, you know, Bill, I know I've met you, but I've really gotten to know Lucas and stand up guy. I mean, just real stand up. And he is genuinely passionate. You know, because I always ask people, hey, how do you like your job? And his answer was, I love my job. And so, and I asked him why. He was just, the difference, making the difference in these boys and girls' lives. And he's passionate, you got a good guy there. And but your program is just phenomenal for what you do for the community. So you have a full support. And yeah, gentlemen, I would really encourage you to take a tour if you haven't already. But you folks are good people, so appreciate you very much.
Thanks, Senator.
Yeah, appreciate you.
It's actually Chief Reese and I were in a lead class together.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Oh, that's tough.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both for being here. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you to the Police Department, very, very good. Okay, we're gonna do Years of Service Recognition Awards. The first person up, Stephen Sieckberg, come on up, sir. And Chief Reese, tell us about it.
Well, I'll tell you, Officer Sieckberg is a 20-year veteran of the Police Department, but he's a veteran even more than out of law enforcement. We got him with quite a few years under his belt from the, from Goshen Township. And I've worked really, really close with Steve in my career. He wears so many hats for the Police Department. He is our Chief Firearms Instructor. He is primarily 99% responsible for the Police Night Out event. He puts that on every year. He's over at the schools, he's taken on the additional responsibility of our police dog Nia, our canine in the schools. And just really, really proud of Steve and he just does so much for our department. We're extremely lucky to have him, so I hope we get 10 more years out of him, so.
Awesome. Yeah, Police Night Out's an awesome event. Well, I appreciate you doing it. I didn't know you were the guy behind the scenes on all that.
Yes, sure I am, for a long time now.
Great. All right, well, thank you so much for your service. Mr. Love?
Yeah, no, definitely, that's such a critical point. I mean, what you carry for there at Police Night Out, but I mean, that's just, I know a lot of work going into that and touch so many lives with that. But at the same rate, you know, you're there working 24/7 and I know you're with Nia at the school. And she just got, what, third place? Is that right?
Yeah, third place in the state for our, our mid-range population in the state of Ohio, so got third place.
Okay, what type of things was she tested on for that?
It was just a voting thing, a public vote.
Okay.
So she, she, we got in kind of late on the contest, so she got the third place.
All right, all right. We'll have to amp it up next, next year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, well, anything we can ever do to help, count us in, so. But thank you for your 20 years' service here at Union Township. I've always enjoyed, you know, being able to touch base with you and hear from you, hear your perspective. So thank you.
Appreciate that, appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, we've got something for you in a few minutes. Go ahead and have a seat in the front row. We're gonna do one more person and then we're gonna bring you both up for photos. Mr. Burkey? Come on up. Mr. Wright, what can you tell us about Mr. Burkey? 25 years.
So I have the distinct privilege of being able to, another exciting thing that I get to do my first meeting back is to get to speak about one of our longstanding employees, Scott Burkey. Scott and I got to work together when I first came to the Township in May of 2006. And I didn't know anything about anything and he reminded me of that. And that was, that was a good thing.
That's funny.
But I will tell you that, that there is no person that knows more about the goings on and what happens in Union Township from the development, you know, the enforcement, keeping our community clean, you know, property values up. And that's really a thankless job in a lot of ways because, you know, much like with the police and fire, you deal with people, a lot of, sometimes they get to deal with people on their best days, but they deal with people on their worst days. With zoning, it's usually on your worst day. And, you know, because we're there because of a complaint or because of an issue. And, you know, Scott and I had the opportunity, and Scott handles himself with grace, professionalism, every day. And that's one thing that made me really proud to be able to supervise him for the better part of 16 years in my previous stint here. And I'm proud that he's a 25-year employee and continues to do good work on behalf of Union Township, so.
Mr. Love, any thoughts?
I mean, Mr. Wright covers the bases there pretty, pretty handily. So I appreciated his candidness with me and I assumed, soon to learn why the nickname of Mayor, Mayor follows him well.
I'm a very honest person.
So that's absolutely right.
Straight shooter.
But, but no, it's, it's very good and I always appreciate that, you know. Like, like the ability to have that type of conversation, so. It's always well received and, you know, so you're integral piece of this township and this community. And we just appreciate you for the 25 years and stick around a little bit.
Yeah.
Mr. Dills, tell us what you think of Mr. Burkey.
Yeah. Scott, you, you do have a very tough job. And, but I'll tell you, you do it with your heart on your sleeve and I respect that. You know, because whenever we have to vote on, on, on something for a violation in our township, I'll usually give you a shout and I'll say, hey, man, give me a background on this. And you'll tell me, you know, hey, Mr. Dills, I have told these people a dozen times, it's time to crack the whip. Okay, Roger that. Or you'll tell me, hey, you know, let's be a little lenient here. And I like that, I respect that. And so, but I'll tell you, you know our rules, because there's a thick book that we have and I clearly don't have that memorized, but you do. And so whenever there's a question about rules and zoning, anything, you're my guy to call. And I like getting your opinion and bouncing ideas off of you. And it's funny, because his phone number and my phone is saved as Scott the Mayor Burkey. As I save it as my phone, it is. And so, and you should wear that with a badge. So 25 years, appreciate you very much. And, and just thank you. You don't get that very often, 25 years with one organization is very rare. So appreciate you very much. And if it's okay, Stephen likewise, 20 years, you could go anywhere. It's no secret, police departments are hurting for officers. And I know you could have gone somewhere, I appreciate that very much. I think I saw your family over there as well, is that right, Stephen? Yes, appreciate you all being here as well, support your, your family members. So appreciate you both very much, so, yeah, thank you.
You know, I first started, I guess, as trustee and first met you. And I don't remember if it was you or if it was somebody else, because I asked the question, what's about the mayor? Why, you know, why you called the mayor? It's like, well, okay, the answer is, if you want to know anybody in Union Township or know anything about Union Township, Scott Burkey is the go-to guy. He's got his ear to the ground, he's lived here, how many years have you lived in Union Township?
Almost 61, 61.
61 years? Been here all your life, that, you know, that's awesome. You know, I, I, you know, I see you in here on, on weekends, holidays, on your own time. You know, just to catch up on stuff. And, you know, your heart for Union Township really shows. And, you know, there's nobody that knows this building, the history of Union Township, any of it better than you. And, you know, you are very much loved and appreciated by this board. And, you know, thank you so much for your years of service and we hope you never retire.
He got some ideas even after he retires. You know, township trustees can now create historical boards, so, you know.
Any final comments from either of you two? Okay. We got, we're gonna do pictures. Me too. I guess I should have asked.
I, I can. Scott, did you say you had something you wanted to share? You're good, okay.
You sure?
You sure?
I wanted to say to your cat, he was too late.
Okay, time for a public comment. I've got three cards. There's cards in the back, if anybody else wishes to speak, just fill one out and bring it up. So first in my hand here is Charles Tassel. Mr. Tassel, come on up. We'll need your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Charles Tassel, 2112 Amberhill Road, Otavia. Appreciate the opportunity to come down, gentlemen, appreciate the opportunity. I'm a candidate for the second district in Congress here. And wanted just to do a little introduction. I've been meeting with a variety of different townships across the district, 16 counties. A little bit of traveling. But one of the things, we can talk about budgets, we can talk about borders, we can talk about a variety of other issues, but something that has been very compelling, albeit lacking sexiness for most townships, is something called fractionalized grant writing. Having been a council member for eight years, this is an issue that we really needed in our little community because at the time, we didn't even know what we didn't know. So when you're trying to ask for grants, you're trying to ask for funds, whether it's, you know, looking for new equipment for the fire department, looking for something for the police department, hey, can we do cameras, what can we do? Or are we looking at infrastructure? What's available? Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at in rearranging how some of the algorithms are put together. It sounds like technical jargon, whatever we're doing. But the reality is, right now, the federal government is funding grants in a way that mostly goes to large cities. Large cities benefit from it, they actually are able to put grant writers in place, they hire them on staff, and continue to get the grants. The money then does not go into smaller townships, smaller communities, typically where we're growing. Union Township's growing, doing very well. You guys are actually one of the wealthier, larger townships in the district. There are some districts that do not have the majority of people even having running water. Let's look that sink in for a second. When you start talking about septics, you start talking about wells. A lot of old aging wells, especially the farther east we go. Those are kinds of things that we're gonna be looking at. And one of the focus points I want to make sure we're bringing to the table is reworking how the federal bureaucracy deals with townships. Whether it's the grant side of things, giving townships the ability to participate. Fire departments, police departments, administrative departments to bring together, partner with other communities, do these programs, get more points, and get farther up on the grant scale and actually get the funds coming in to where it's actually needed. So that's one of the key pieces I like to focus on. Happy to chat with you more on that. But this is one of those issues that, again, nobody wants to read it in the headlines, but on a practical level where we actually work and live, this is a very pragmatic piece that we, we actually need in our community. So again, the basic kind of experience I like to bring to the table. Happy to talk about other issues and happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah. How, how's the, how's the trail going?
Good, we're about 20 days out now. So busy, energized. So it's been, there's 11 people in the race. So it's, you know, it's out there, a variety of folks showing up. And main issue is, as everybody knows, illegal immigration. Topic du jour, no matter what. And it is a concern on a couple of fronts because not only do you have to fix the wall, you have to fix the gate. We've got people who are willing to go to coyotes and cartels rather than actually come through our process because our process is not bad. That's something that has to be fixed and addressed. Short of going into a speech on that, I'll stop there, sorry.
That's good, that's good, yeah. Thank you, Charles. What's, what's the most interesting thing you've learned throughout the district?
The, the, one of the interesting things, the backbone of infrastructure. Several eastern counties that are actually lacking broadband as a network, lacking cellphone service. And when I say this, think in terms of lacking internet. So that during COVID lockdowns, when the kids are actually supposed to be learning at home and working on the internet, they have no internet. There is no access. And we have multiple counties that are in that boat. And the, the lack of success and the challenges for some of those kids, they're literally two and three years behind. And I don't mean like, oh, they had some. And I don't mean like, oh, they had some. They are just completely behind. And that has been actually probably one of the most stunning, how stark that contrast has been in some of the counties.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Tassel. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Charles. Okay, Sheri, come on up.
Thank you. I have some practice information.
Yeah, you can break it up to us. All right, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sheri Mola, and I live at eighteen seventy-five State Route one thirty-one, Milford. And I'm here today to talk to you about the hazards of the COVID vaccine. I'm gonna start my timer here. Thank you, trustees, for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm representing our group Advocates for Medical Truth. AMT is a patriarch citizens group with a focus of sharing our COVID vaccine, COVID nineteen vaccine concerns with county officials. We have both vaccinated and unvaccinated members. We've gathered information and compiled a Word doc of hyperlinks you can control click directly to and review the information. We're not trying to convince you of anything. Our goal is to share information, not show in the legacy media. The COVID nineteen vaccine is harmful and deadly, both to the vaccinated and unvaccinated via shedding. There's no way I can touch on any of this information in five minutes. The only thing I'm providing you is a, a document that if you take the time to look yourselves, you can actually look and view the information that we have. I emailed each of the trustees two documents, a sixteen-page COVID nineteen Word document, and the Smith-Munt Modernization Act of twenty twelve. I have printed copies for you guys. Why don't you see negative COVID information in the media? Because of the Smith-Munt Modernization Act of twenty twelve, S-M-M-A, and the Big Six. The S-M-M-A was buried in the twenty twelve National Defense Authorization Act. It repealed the nineteen forty-eight Smith-Munt Act, which strictly prohibited the government from releasing propaganda to Americans. The S-M-M-A was signed into law by President Obama in twenty twelve. Our government is now allowed to create propaganda tailored specifically for U.S. public consumption, using any media it sees fit, while remaining anonymous as the source of the material being reported. Big Six refers to, in nineteen eighty-three, fifty companies owned ninety percent of all media. As of twenty twelve, only six companies own the same ninety percent. On the Word document, I'm only going to touch on the first six pages. The remaining document consists of visuals, graphs, and under the nanotechnology category is a link to the twenty seventeen U.S. patent for nanotechnology in vaccines. I've also, okay, here we go. So if you want to move to the page, to the document here, there's a, I've starred Dr. William Makus. He is a doctor in Columbia, no, I'm sorry, Alberta, Canada. He has a Substack, and he puts out much, much information about the hazards of the COVID vaccine. And if you turn to page two, I didn't star it, but Florida's Surgeon General Joseph Lapato confirms the detection of DNA fragments in the COVID mRNA vaccines. This is the Florida Surgeon General. And he's also pushing to have the shots banned in Florida. Tucker Carlson did an interview on him at the TCN Network. Down further at the page, at page two, whistleblower Barry Young, New England Health Database Administrator. Mr. Young, because New Zealand has a small amount of data, Mr. Young was actually able to get his hands on the whole data. It was very small, compartmentalized, and he ran some numbers, some crunch numbers. And he found out that there was a seventeen to twenty percent increase in deaths following the COVID jab in New Zealand. And you know what happened to him? They arrested him. Now, and also page three, new data reveals tsunami of COVID vaccine deaths. Systems Energy and Analysis, John Bodoin, I guess is his name. He, he got FOIA requests, and for the deaths in Massachusetts, he compared them to the VAERS data to see who had logged VAERS data and found out that a lot of the people that logged adverse reactions in the VAERS data had death certificates. So that's, the first seven minutes of that will break your heart, because he talks about people, not numbers, the real people. And then there's another one. OBGYN drops alarming miscarriage data testifying before Congress. This is Congress. People are testifying in front of Congress. And I'm gonna go ahead and skip to page five. Attorney General Ken Paxton sues Pfizer for representing COVID nineteen vaccine efficiency and conspiring to censor public discourse. And I also, for the trustee packet, I actually took the first two pages of a fifty-four-page filing by Attorney General Ken Paxton against Pfizer. This is the Attorney General of Texas. It's not conspiracy theories. This is Congress. This is Texas. Okay, now, I guess that's just about all I'm gonna say. I just want to say, thank you so much for your willingness to hear alternative information regarding the COVID nineteen vaccination. I hope that you will take some time to look at the information that I've compiled. And if you think anything that I've spoken of tonight is, is relevant, please reach out to county officials. I'm trying to reach out to all the trustees to share this information. Let them know you heard something. And we'll be glad to present any information to anyone we can. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Our trustee Dills has a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it Ms. Mola?
Mola.
Mola, okay. I know you've put a lot of work and effort into this. I'm just curious, what do you, what do you want us to do with?
All I want you to do is, I knew that was gonna come up the question. You can't do anything about it, but all you can do is make yourself aware. You know, right now, the, the problem that we're having, our group, is that people want to be like ostriches and stick their hands in the sand. They don't want to look at what's out there. If you, and you and you make yourself aware, you're more people that know. So that's all that I can say. And talk to other county officials.
So for what it's worth, you know, I, I'm not vaccinated with the COVID, but I'm not anti-vax either. But we don't make any of our employees in the township get vaccinated. I can't speak for all of us, but I'm pretty confident I can. We're all very liberty-minded folks here, Karen. And so, which, what does that mean? Freedom of choice. And so, for what it's worth, we don't twist our employees' arms, the township, to get it or not to get it. There's, there's a choice. And so, I'm not anti-vax, but I'm also, but I'm pro-choice and liberty-minded, for what it's worth. So, but I appreciate the information. Yeah, very informative. And I saw your email. I did read over it. And, yeah, I appreciate you very much, Ms. Mola.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're not anti-vax either, right? I mean, you're, you just want people to be informed.
I just want people to be informed. I realize that we cannot, we, some people have to have the vaccine. They have to have that to feel safe. And that's their choice. As you said, pro-choice. But I want people to know, well, not that kind of pro-choice. But I want people to know that this information is here. And if they don't have access to it, how are they gonna be educated? You know? That's my whole point.
I admire your passion. Thank you, Ms. Mola. You know, trustee Dills, I know, very publicly refuses vaccine and about got kicked out of the Air Force for it. One of the national news.
I did. I did, yeah. I did a Fox News interview about it. And I, I don't, I don't serve for the money. I don't need the money. I don't utilize any of the military benefits. I just do it because I'm still already able to mail body to serve my country. And I didn't want the vaccine. So about seven months, I got kicked out, well, put on IRR. And that was basically being kicked out without being kicked out. But then we won our court case, and they let me back in. But, so, but again, I took the vaccine. That's okay. If you didn't get it, that's okay as well. So that's just my stance on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
But thank you, Ms. Mola. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Sarah, come on up.
I'm Sarah Welch. I live at two four three three State Route one thirty-three in Bethel.
Thank you.
And I just had some follow-up comments for Sheri's presentation. So she's compiled a number of articles about the COVID shot and adverse effects and shedding. And she is doing the job that our health officials should be doing, informing the public. And you were saying that, what do you want us to, you know, what can you do about it? Well, you've just been informed that there's a district advisory council coming up in March. And according to Ohio Code three seven oh nine point thirty-five, this deals with the removal of health department officials who are failing to do their duties. The district advisory council has the power and responsibility to investigate and perceive charges for misfeasance, malfeasance, and non-feasance. Non-feasance is the intentional inaction to perform an act required of one's office. So that council meeting is, I believe, the only effective way to find out what has been happening with our health district. Ohio Code thirty seven oh one oh five states that the Director of Health shall keep all health officials and general public informed in a printed annual report regarding progress made in studying the cause and prevention of disease. I would think that the hundred-year pandemic would qualify for that. However, they also accepted federal grant money, and in so doing, became a sponsor. They have been dispensing experimental shots made with the new mRNA technology, which should be governed by the rules of the FDA and HHS. Reports should have been made as to the effectiveness of this shot. Putting shots in human subjects begins with informed consent. These forms have never been updated to list side effects. People are given booster after booster without understanding the risks they are taking. Radio ads simply say, to stay healthy, get the newest shot. So you have been presented with articles describing adverse effects, or events. These testimonies on a local level have been presented to the CCPH, both in letters and in person at board meetings. These have been discarded and ignored. At no time in the past three years has county-specific numbers of infections, adverse events, and deaths due to COVID been made accessible to citizens. Despite repeated attempts to meet with the Health Commissioner, we are unable to get answers to our questions. In violation of FDA and HHS rules in drug testing on human subjects, updates and reports regarding risk versus benefit are not available. Credible peer-reviewed reports state that the risk of myocarditis is increased two hundred and twenty-three times higher than in all vaccines combined over the past thirty years. The risk to the young from COVID is very small, as compared to the risk of developing myocarditis when taking the shot. I would like ethical, competent, reliable people in positions at the Health Department, the people that have the best interest and health of our people of our county at the forefront of their decisions. So I ask that you at least please investigate where over two million dollars of grant money went. Summary of money has been argued to be sent to all of the townships. Get an explanation as to how six hundred thousand dollars were spent on contact tracing, and no data has been presented, as far as I know. Everyone has lived through an unprecedented pandemic over the past years. Everyone has a story to tell. Our friends and families and neighbors have all been affected. Everyone knows people who died. Perhaps hearing some of the issues brought up have made you think of your own personal situations. Does it make you think twice about getting a healthy booster? Perhaps you're curious as to how many unexplained sudden deaths have happened in our township. Not one health official we have contacted had any idea where to find that information. It is their job to know. No one knew what to do in the first months. We are now over three years out, and what reports have we seen from our Health Department? No county-specific data has been made available. So I ask that you go to the district advisory council and at least make inquiries as to some of these questions.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any comments, questions, anything?
Yes, sir.
You know, my, my only thought on, on, just in general, I don't have a question, so just a comment here, in, in general, this topic, is before COVID hit, censorship was not a problem in this country. And that is what's really scared me the most. Research is being shut down. Anybody that's not following, you know, the public line, whether it's the CDC or the WHO, the WHO, you know, they're, they're silenced. And that's never happened before. And that I find very troubling. And, and it begs the question, why are the minority opinions being silenced on this topic? I get it.
It's just the non-information. You can't get information when you go try to find out, you know, answers to questions. You know, like I said, we've sent them letters. We've sent the Board of Health, each member of the doctors, letters, you know, asking that they, you know, at least give us some answers to county-specific numbers even. And all they do is refer to the CDC, which I think is inexcusable. It's like, they're continuing to put shots in arms, and they should be accountable for, you know, what's to come.
Yeah, I feel your frustration. I appreciate you keeping up the fight. All right, well, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Thank you.
Okay, department reports. Mr. Wright, what do you got for fire and, fire and emergency medical service?
Yes, sir. So for the month of January twenty twenty-four, fire service call responses, one hundred and seventy-four calls. We had five hundred and fifty-seven emergency medical responses, five hundred and five patient contacts, four hundred and eight hospital transports. The department completed nine hundred and sixty-two training hours, completed twenty-one public education details, ten EMT medic ride-along training hours, four life safety inspections, and conducted eighteen inspections with the building department. They had some voluntary mandatory overtime. And then we do show presently now four vacancies as a result of the promotion this evening. So just one other thing, I'd like to make a point. You know, Assistant Chief Fife couldn't be here this evening. He had another obligation. But I would like to thank him specifically for his service in an interim capacity for the township for the better part of four or five months, something like that. He did, I think he did a great job keeping the place on track. You know, this is a big organization. There's a lot that can go wrong quickly in a short amount of time. And I think he should be commended for his efforts to keep us on track in that regard. So.
Absolutely. Any questions, comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Wright, for that. And absolutely agree. Assistant Chief Fife is a tremendous asset to this community. And he's done an incredible job over the last five months.
Mr. Dills?
I agree. Can't say anything more on it. Assistant Chief Fife did a great job. But also, I know we had a big night with our new fire chief. But also, this is Corey's first night as our administrator. Welcome back, sir. This is your first business trustee meeting, sir. So very lucky and grateful to have you and sit next to me. I appreciate you, sir. So, yeah, and I know this isn't the right time, but just want to say you've hit the ground running. So love you and appreciate you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't have anything to add beyond what you just heard. I'll just say ditto's. And we'll move on. Okay, police department report, Chief Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of January, the Communications Center handled four thousand four hundred and two calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and five thousand eight hundred and twenty-six total calls. Our records section processed four hundred and ninety-one juvenile and adult court-related documents and distributed one hundred and eighty-seven court notices that required police officers' personal appearance in court. They also processed twenty-five Rule Sixteens for the prosecutor's office. We did not issue any vendor permits in the month of January. We handled one hundred and sixty-two records requests and redacted forty-nine videos. In the area of public affairs, our officers conducted three public relations events during the month of January, including a preschool presentation at Child Focus, a Girl Scout tour of the Police Department, and a presentation on swatting for the staff at West Claremont Local Schools. In the area of operations, our officers took three hundred and twelve incident reports, ninety-eight crash reports, made eight hundred and twenty-two traffic stops, wrote one hundred and seventy-three citations, wrote six hundred and forty-seven written warnings, made seventy-eight criminal arrests, one hundred and seven traffic arrests, and served seventy-one warrants. Our officers totaled one hundred and twenty-eight hours of training in the month of January, and fuel costs for the month were roughly eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, comments?
One thing, kind of higher levels strategically, Chief Reese. Talk about vehicles for a moment, and I know we've got vehicles on the purchase order tonight. But Chevy Tahos, as far as a multimodal vehicle for their overall performance, comfort, and their mission capability rate, and at the same rate, what that may drive for our ever-challenging recruiting initiatives. What can you say about Chevy Tahos, or what type of vehicle that forces adopt as their fleet?
Well, we have looked into Chevy Tahos with our most recent police cruiser purchases. We have had one Tahoe in my time here. It was a K-nine vehicle. All I can say about it is it performed extremely well. We did not have a lot. We did not have a lot of maintenance costs with it. The new Tahos are very roomy, significantly more room in them than the Explorers. They are a little bit more expensive than the Ford Explorers, but I've heard nothing but positive from the police community about the Tahos and their performance, and I do know that a lot of departments are going that way.
Okay. Okay. And what would you take as the sentiment of, let's envision, you know, my young, hopeful police officer, and I get to choose this location or this location. This location's got, you know, one vehicle make, and this location's got Tahos. Is there something that piques that young person's interest to help recruit?
Well, I would hope with our department, there's a lot of other great qualities that are going to bring them here, and that would be pretty far down the list, but depends on what your flavor is, I guess. I mean, I personally feel it's a better vehicle, but, you know, I don't know that that's a big draw for people or not. We've got a lot of great things that stand out, besides the Cruisers that we drive.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, I just wanted to see if there's any more research on that as far as a state bed and/or in lieu of the state bed, if they're not available.
We are looking at them. We're looking at them versus the other options that are out there right now.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Chief Reese, great job. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one thing. So I want to kind of tee this up a little bit. So the question has to do with automobile accidents, specifically on private property, and I'm interested in how, I guess what I'd like you to do, kind of give us a high-level overview of what happens when you're involved in an automobile accident, and how is it different whether you're on a public street, you know, versus Walmart parking lot, for example? And also, you know, if you could compare, contrast a little bit with Kentucky, and how's different there, so the folks that are either driving over there or maybe from there over here could see the difference. And just so the public understands why I'm bringing this up, about forty years ago, I was involved in accidents on private property. I got screwed. You know, it's like sue me. It was a few months ago, the shoe was on the other foot, I was involved again in an accident, this time it was my fault. I went ahead and paid for everything, everything's good, but it just brought up the question in my mind, what are you supposed to do? What happens in those situations? So, Chief, go ahead and tell us.
Well, in the state of Ohio, and obviously in Union Township, if you're involved in an accident on a public roadway, a dedicated roadway, an officer, one of our officers is going to come out and take a report, and if there's fault to be found, if the officer can find fault, we will typically issue a citation to the at-fault driver, and you'll have a police report, copy the police report from your insurance companies on private property in Ohio and in Union Township. We certainly will come out and take a report for you for documentation and insurance purposes, but we do not find fault on private property. Very rare cases, I shouldn't say never, in the case of, obviously, of an intoxicated person or leaving the scene of an accident, we can't cite for those reasons, but we can't find fault, you know, failure to yield ACDA, stuff like that. In the state of Kentucky, on public roadways, it's the same as the state of Ohio. Kentucky State Police and municipalities can find fault, or I'm sorry, in the state of Kentucky, the public and private rules are exactly the same. It is a no-fault state in Kentucky. So Kentucky State Police, Kentucky municipalities, they do not find fault, whether it's on public or private. They will come out and take a report, as we will, but they will not issue a citation. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, for the month of January twenty-four, thirteen burials were performed, generating $8,175. Fifteen resident graves were purchased, generating $10,500. One non-resident grave was purchased, generating $1,700, and three columbarium niches were purchased, generating $4,400. The total amount generated for the period was $26,530.60. In the Roads Division, a total of forty-three work orders were completed on township roads, and two-hundred-and-sixty-four potholes were patched over a total of twenty-three township roads. And township roads were treated with salt and brine on January thirteenth, fourteenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-third. In the Parks Division, winter maintenance and repairs continue on all parks tools and machinery, and bedding maintenance continues on all township landscape beds. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Logan, any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Dills?
Mr. Taylor, your guys were very busy. That's a lot of plowdows, two-hundred-and-sixty-four, and then all the snow that we had, salt in the roads, they were quick, they were fast, and I just, please pass along our continued gratitude. There was, we got dumped one night with like six or seven inches of snow, I remember, and so they were on it. And I know that's a challenging job, because we are responsible for township roads, and there will be some folks that will complain, and rightfully so, because their road or road they travel on has not been salted or plowed yet, but that's not our road. It's a county road, and so, but I just appreciate, just please pass along our gratitude to your guys that are working hard in the middle of the night, two o'clock in the morning, salt and plow mower, and bed safe, so, yeah, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
I got a question about the salt storage. So, you know, at the beginning of the season, you stock up, you're ready for the season. Some years, you get more snow than others. This year has been unusually warm, and especially the snowiest month of the year, being February, that we've only had one snowy event in the entire month. So at the end of the season, you got all this leftover salt. Does that keep for the next year, or what happens to it?
Yes, sir, it does. Typically, I like to, salt is like any other commodity, I mean, it, supply and demand, you know, the price may go up or down, so I always hedge a bet on the fact that it's going to be cheaper if I buy it this year, so I always refill the salt shed at the end of the season with whatever we have left, and then it'll keep for, because we have a cupboard at Clepper Park. Sometimes if you get it out too close, you may get a little bit of a crust on it because of the weather. However, we, you know, drag that out, and then we reuse it. It doesn't go to waste.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on. Mr. McCormick, what do you got for us?
For the month of January, for inspections, we had thirty-seven inspections, six complaints, two unfounded complaints, three warning citations, a fifteen-day non-compliance letter. We had seven cases resolved, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine legal signs removed, fourteen miscellaneous items, eight violations for the month, three re-inspections of violations, no nuisances. For permit activity, we had three commercial permits, three change of uses, two signs, three single-family homes, two additions, one deck, five accessory structures, five pools, for twenty-four permits, and revenue of $9,412 for the month. That concludes my report.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dills?
Good job, Mr. McCormick. Appreciate you. Thank you.
So the Administrator Report, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. So it's been a busy month, month and a half. I'll try to spare everybody the full four-something pages here, try to hit some highlights and stuff that we have not or will not touch on this evening. So one of the first things I want to point out, you know, obviously, the open checkbook is up to date through January. Just a note to users, we found this out, you have to go in and actually click the year that you want, because it'll try to load the prior year, 2023. So there's a little user interface in there, but there's a way to do that, so that's a little kind of a tip for that. Second thing I want to point out, if anybody, you know, this will be arriving in people's mailboxes soon. I want to commend Lisa Ayers on her work on this, to get the newsletter out, not only a high-quality production, but timely in that. A lot of great information, did a great job, and, you know, I put some out for the folks to pick up on their way out, or hopefully some of the people that were here earlier grabbed one. So many more of these to come quarterly. Outstanding work, and wanted to call her out for that work that she did in that regard. In addition, work is now well underway to complete the 2023 Annual Report. We have an initial draft. We are proofing it and hope to have that out soon. We're really focused on driving home on readability and putting it, making it accessible to people to access, you know, specific, you know, fingertip-type information, you know, what is stuff that's useful to know about what we do and who we are here at the township. Regarding just a couple other items, we're working on Elmont Drive Greenwich Solutions. Mr. Taylor and I have had some meetings with Choice One Engineering. They're under contract, looking at that. You know, it's a pretty complex process. They had an initial review, and we're continuing on that. The 2024 Summer Newsletter will be very full predominantly, and will feature our 2024 summer and fall, spring, summer, and fall events calendar. We've been very busy working on that, and it will be an exciting several months in Union Township. The, as Mr. Taylor noted, they treated for several events. They really handled two very significant snow and ice events in January and another one in February, and as always, they do an excellent job, and Lisa did a good job getting the public service announcements out there. The grand reopening Clepper Park Playground is tentatively scheduled for April of 2024, along with the pickleball courts. This is all weather-dependent. As I understand it, we have to have several days of ambient temperatures being above a certain degree level in order for these things to be effective. I want to let the board know that upon coming back to the Township, I was able to complete tours at all of the six fire stations to assess the present, current, future needs of our, you know, capital needs as we sort of embark on this. And, you know, one thing I will tell you is I was thoroughly impressed with each and every person that I was able to interact with there, and again, we have the best people, and I'm not ashamed to say that, you know. So with that, just another point of emphasis, we've begun working on the end-of-summer celebrations for 2024. We had an initial kickoff meeting with Crossroads, and fortunately, many of the same familiar faces were in the room now, as were when I was here two years ago, and I believe that it'll be a successful event, and our community partners, Crossroads and Jungle Gyms, are engaged in that. Matt is working, Mr. Taylor is working with Claremont County Engineer to discuss landscaping enhancements on the new I Colts Road roundabouts. As the construction progresses on that, this is the time to think about, you know, the enhancement of that and the furthering maintenance of that moving forward. We continue to work with ODNR on the Glen Willow Dam project. Again, Mr. Taylor's been pushing that rock up a hill for several years now, and we think that decommissioning that and reducing the pool level will avoid, you know, some long-term maintenance obligations in that. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We do have, we will be scheduling a Records Commission meeting for this year as part of our annual requirement. That is, as you know, the Fiscal Officer and the Chairman of the Board make that up, make that commission up, so we'll continue to look at our retention schedules and bring any changes in that we need. And the Claremont County Economic Forecast Breakfast is scheduled for March seventh, 2024, at 7:30 a.m., and it's a great event. I don't know if the Chamber still has tickets. If folks are out there, they should book an event. It's a great event. It used to be Brian Bolio, it's now his successor, and I can't pronounce his name, but he's very good, because I've seen him before. It's a younger guy. It's Connor Lowkar. Yes, yes.
Yeah, wow, good job.
So, great event, looking forward to it, and hope that, you know, I think the Township will be well-represented, you know, as we are again, the presenting sponsor in that regard, so happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Logan?
Thanks for coming, all that, Mr. Wright, and again, just a big welcome, welcome back, and it's been exciting to have you hit the ground running, and it's just, I mean, there's not enough words there, so it's, we'll just keep going with it, but, yeah, you know, really looking forward to this. I know there's so much that you have been chopping down, and, I mean, just a couple things, I think it's great for the Township to be able to receive credit cards throughout, economic forecast. Are we at a level of sponsorship where we have additional tickets this year to send out some invites to some of our partners, community members, things like that?
We have a substantial number of tickets. We were actually able to work with, I guess, some of the lead Claremont folks are going to be able to be in attendance through the Chamber, and they would assist us with that. And then I think that, you know, I'll check with Joy and make sure we have some additional, you know, we have an ample allotment, so I'll see if we have any in reserve.
It's good to get our department heads an invite to that as well, too, and I think that's a perfect thing for Chief Clements as well, to get immersed in looking at that kind of strategic position.
I'll make sure I put him on the invite. I know that that was one of the first things that I did, was get these guys the invite that, you know, it'll be there, and it's a great event. We should be well-represented.
Yes, good, good, good. And then the big end-of-summer fireworks, we've got such a great layout here, between you, Lisa, and the team, I don't know, consider some type of reception or something that we can do in addition to keep moving that event kind of bigger and better, maybe with the bands or whatever that may be, but I think the community would appreciate that. But you are just off-running and crushing it, so I trust you and thank you again, so it's been fun having you back. Good.
Mr. Dills?
I can't say this enough, life, I mean selfishly, life for me has been very easy since you've been back, and so I appreciate you, Mr. Wright.
You're also not chairman anymore.
It's also, I actually loved being chairman. I really enjoyed it. I put my foot in my mouth a few times, but I enjoyed it. You have done a lot of cleanup work. You have been extremely busy, Mr. Wright, so I just know, I appreciate you, and as a matter of fact, I've come in at six, seven o'clock at night, and you're still here, so just don't get in trouble with the home life, so, you know, but please know that you've got our full support, and honestly, you've made my job a lot, lot easier, tenfold, so hopefully you take everything I just said as a hundred percent compliment, so, yes, sir, you got it.
All right, I'll say ditto's of that as well, and move on. All right, public hearings, we have none. Old business, we have none. New business, we have the consent agenda, so I would like a motion for the approval of the minutes from January ninth, February fifth, and February twenty-third, as well as approval of payments and approval of the monthly financial report.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion curious.
Okay, the motion agenda, approval of purchase orders. Mr. Wright, what can you tell us about the purchase orders exceeding $15,000?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First purchase order this evening is Total Quality Logistics LLC. This is our December 2023 Economic Development Reimbursement Agreement. That, as you know, is a monthly charge, and those are, just so everybody's aware, that's a rebate of a portion of income taxes that we receive from the jet. So the second purchase order we have is the Beachmont Ford, this is for three police cruisers. These are 2023 Explorers. Interceptor cruisers, you know, the chief tells me they're hard to come by, so this was an order from two years ago. They finally came in. It's an opportunity, and they're going to honor pricing from a long time ago, so that will be, and I have a note here, that is included in a later piece of legislation. That is a SLF RF, basically ARPA money purchase. The next item is the Terrazzi Inc., it's for the 2024 end-of-summer fireworks, I'm sorry. The police cruisers were 131, 715, TQL was 53, 633, 29. I forgot to read the numbers, I'm sorry. The end-of-summer fireworks, $30,000, that's for that, and as you know, there's a recoupment on that, $5,000 each for sponsorship from Jungle Gyms and from Crossroads, so that will reduce that cost. Next item is the Sub-Aquatics Incorporated. This is for an SCBA air compressor filling station and cascade system for Station 49. That's in the amount of $54,583.26. This is for a whole replacement unit and filling station, you know, this is for our SCBA devices that our firefighters have, and that will go at 49, and then we have, that will actually replace a non-existent unit. And then we have a second purchase, the Sub-Aquatic Incorporated, for 33, 992, 38. That replaces a pump that is on its last legs. That's the pump only for Station 52. So long and short of it is, these SCBA apparatuses are really twofold. It's the packs the guys wear, and then it's the filling devices, and actually a blast containment unit for when you pressurize those tanks, you know, if they fail, they'll fail inside of a hardened container. So those are both also ARPA fund resolutions, and that'll get us back up and running, because the equipment we have, we have absolutely gotten our money's worth out of the ones left. So the next item is the purchase of police and fire radios. This is the This is the Motorola Solutions Inc. These, it's in the amount of 30, 333,079, 11. This is an ARPA fund resolution. These are, and I have a note here, these are, we have a bunch of radios that as of 2025 are going to be paperweights. They're going to be bricks. And the reason that is, is because they're old technology and there's the Mark System Upgrade, which it's called P25 Authentication. And long and short of it is, this is an unfunded mandate that the state decided to gift us with in, under the guise of keeping unauthorized radio users off of our channels. It's great, except it's unfunded. So, you know, we're under the gun here. We have to get these things because short of guns, drugs for pharmaceuticals, ambulances, police cars, tasers, these are some of the most important things that we have. It's this guy, it's the firefighter's lifeline in a fire scene. It's the law enforcement officer's lifeline and these are critical components. Now, this isn't every radio we have, but these are all the ones that are in bad dire straits. We do have some radios that are sort of in a newer group that can be upgraded, but that are no longer, you know, have replacement parts and things like that. And then we have some, you know, again, as we're buying them. So, you know, the other part of this is I can't stress the importance enough that we need to get in a regular habit of planning for and replacing these items on a scheduled basis and, and taking that on as an annualized cost because, you know, that way we can avoid these one-time, you know. But fortunate for us, you know, we have the ARPA money to take care of it. So, so that's 333,079, 11. The next purchase order is the ESO Solutions Inc. That's for our Fire Department Reporting Software. That's for the annual contract, the amount of $16,200. Next one's the Motorola Solutions Inc. Call works 911, 911 system for the yearly service fee, the amount of $30,000. Another one to Motorola Solutions Inc. for dispatch consoles. Again, that's a critical part of our operation. That's their life. That's their servicing agreement. It's for $32,783.64. And, you know, the much anticipated spring junk collection purchase order to Rumkey of Ohio for $25,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Logan?
I'm good.
Mr. Dills?
I was going to comment on the, the new radios, the police and fire. I get it. I understand. I think we kind of dropped the ball there, but you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Wright. So not, not right now, but maybe connect with both chiefs and probably Assistant Chief Fife on not something this year, but what, what is something that we're going to need two, three, four, five years from now? So not only for this board, but any, any new board, so we don't have to, have to take a big hit like this and we can plan and prepare. Because I, I'm not a police officer and I don't know what, what you guys are going to need three, four, five years from now and it's anything to the firefighters. So therefore we can budget for it in the future. But we're, we're blessed to have the ARPA funds, so this doesn't come out of the general fund. But in years to come, we're not going to have ARPA funds there. So, yeah. That's all I got, sir.
All right, thanks. So I, I got to comment on the radios as well. And this is more just kind of for public consumption, telling the story here. So for, I don't know how long, quite a while now, I've been hearing about needing radio upgrades. Okay, that was fine. You know, I didn't think a whole lot of it. It's like, whatever. Of course, my mindset goes back to, you know, Radio Shack and transistor radios. I'm not thinking a big dollar amount here. And then I see the invoice, it's a third of a million dollars. I about blew a gasket. A third of a million dollars? So, Mr. Wright and I had a lengthy discussion. Why do we need to spend a third of a million dollars on radios? I mean, I got a reputation up here. I hate to spend money. You know, everybody knows. I just hate to spend money. And what it came down to was this is something that's needed to been done for, I guess, several years. We've been kicking the can down the road. It, as, as Mr. Wright said, it's an unfunded mandate from the state about why these became obsolete and there's some technical things with flashing a chip or something. And, and what it comes down to is, yeah, I mean, yes, we have the ARPA funds. That's certainly very helpful to, to cover this. Of course, ARPA funds can be used to pave roads. You know, it's a, it's a fungibility of, of money. You know, that we really have to do it. We, we, you know, we have a gun to our heads and, and I, you know, I hate spending that kind of money. You know, I, you know, like I said, I about blew a gasket when I saw, when I saw the number. And he convinced me, we, we have to do it. Any other comments from the board?
Well, I'll just say from that sense, we as board members and anyone in, in position in the community, our state reps, state senators, we basically have to lobby them of these unfunded requirements that come into the local, you know, if, if they want to push for something, they need to fund it or at least be doing some split with us. And so that's something I think, I know I'll definitely carry to our state senator and, and our state rep. So that's, that's one thing when it comes to this exact type of example of a mandate. Then the other thing is, it's probably unfortunate, I'm just, I'm going to make an uneducated assumption here, there's probably some type of chip or cellular chip or some connection into why this is a secure channel. And, and frankly, unfortunately, just the way direction of Cold Wars and things go, I think from a local government standpoint, we have to be prepared for when a cellular communications and different things go out from a essentially an infrastructure attack that we have good communications. So we probably have to have old school radios or, or something of that sense and nature too, because the way the tea leaves are lining up, just to be frank, it's always been on everyone's target that China is moving on Taiwan in 2027, but now our GDP is about 5% and strong and China is weaker and they view it as now is their time to start to make movement. And you hear it even from, from the FBI as far as targeting it on infrastructure areas. So I just think of what does that mean for the local government? What does that mean for our communities? Well, means if the lights go out, means if radios and stuff go out, where's, where's, where's that thin blue line? Where's our first responders? And that's, that's what we can do as local leaders is be that, because it's going to fall on our backs. So that's it.
Mr. Logan, you good? Okay. Mr. Dills, would you like to make a motion to approve the purchase orders exceeding $15,000?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell?
Roll call? Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Union Township Spring Junk Days. That's going to be, let's see, so I would like to have a motion to approve the spring, the expenditure for the spring junk days for April the 15th through April the 20th. That'd be Thursday and Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Saturday from 8:00 to 3:00. Love a motion for that.
I'll move, yeah, for the spring junk days, April 18th through April 20th, 2024. There you go. So moved.
Did I say it wrong?
He corrected you.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Taylor, we just described very briefly, quickly, what are you, what are the folks not allowed to bring to junk days?
Hazardous chemicals, batteries, I mean, car batteries, tires, paints. Mattresses have to be wrapped, sofas have to be wrapped. No oil, you know, car oil or anything like that. Outside of that, pretty much anything else.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Sure, okay. On, on that topic, Mr. Taylor, is, is that information on our website?
Yeah, probably not currently, but it will be.
Okay, because that, I think that would be handy to, you know, put on social media and, and link to it because you get those questions all the time. Hey, you know, does the township take this or take that? And so it'd be handy to have those, those answers on our, on our fingertips.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I was flipping through the, the, the spring newsletter for as well too. So spring cleaning, three-day junk removal has its own half page on there as well listing that information. So I am sure that Mr. Taylor will exercise our community engagement manager, Ms. Lisa R., and be pushing that stuff out hard.
Okay, so we have a corrected motion and a second, we had a discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, similarly for fall junk days, I would like a motion, I'll try to read it correctly this time. I would like to have a motion to establish Union Township Fall Junk Days for October 24th through October the 26th, 2024. That'd be a Thursday and a Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I have none.
All right, Mr. Campbell?
Roll call? Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is JED appointments. Kind of a lot here. Mr. Wright, would you walk us through the multiple JED appointments here and the motion we're going to need to, to have them move forward?
Certainly, Mr. Becker. So this is a little bit of housekeeping. So as you know, the township has seven JED districts with the city of Milford. All of those JED boards have a board composition that's made up based on the contractual obligation. Among those is a member that the city of Milford appoints, three members appointed by the township and a JED chairman, which is selected among the membership of those boards. So in essence, we have, and we have to review those and they've, they're staggered and all that. And I worked with Mr. McCormick. He did a lot, made a lot of phone calls, sort of, you know, wrangled people and schedules and get people to commit to a, a very large meeting commitment of usually not more than one meeting per year and usually not more than 15 minutes per meeting. So that's typically what that is. So with those JEDs, basically I need a motion to approve numerous appointments to the various JED boards. We had a lot of them lapse in the last year and a half. And I'll just read through this for the board and it would be as follows. So JED 1, there's no appointments that are expiring. JED 2 would be Phil Adams Worker Member to a term ending in March 15th, 2028. And Jimmy Bonamino is the Business Member for a term ending on 3/15/2028. On JED 3, we do need the board to designate a township member for the term ending for 24, 2028. And then in addition to that, Pastor Eddie Houschel would be the Worker Member and Ray Hensley would be the Business Member, both of them with terms ending on April 24th, 2028. For JED 4, that's Malcom Brewing Company JED. That is again, a township member. Kathleen Dewey is the Business Member. Michael Dewey is the Worker Member, terms ending on July 30th, 2028. JED 5, that is the West Claremont High School JED. Again, we need a township member. So we're up to three now and then three different JEDs there. And then we need, it would be Randy Gaphart, which is the Business Member and Greg Potabom, which would be the Worker Member. Their term ending on March 8th, 2028. For JED number 6, that's the former high school site provision living and all of that. That's Claire Grube, Grube or Group? Ruby? For, as a Business Member, term ending on May 9th, 2028. And for JED 7, which is the Hamilton Safe Round Bottom JED, that's John Stroya with the Business Member, term ending on December of 2028, December 10th. And Chris Betts, who would be the Worker Member, term ending on December 10th, 2028. So with that, I need a motion for the board to make those appointments as indicated. And you will need to designate a township member for JED 3, 4 and 5.
And you can fill in my name for that unless one of my colleagues prefers it?
When do you typically take those meetings, John? On those JED boards?
When, 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 when it gets scheduled.
Yeah. Oh, I'll let you continue to carry that.
Yes, I will. Happy to do that behalf of the township.
Good luck, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, then Mr. Wright described the motion. I think all you need is so moved.
So moved, thank you, appreciate it.
I, I will second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I have none.
None.
All right, Mr. Campbell?
Roll call? Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Number five on the agenda, OKI, the Regional Council of Governments Board of Directors, Executive Committee Appointments. Mr. Wright, would you describe what's going on there?
Yes, I just need a motion to designate me to serve as Mr. Loeb's alternate on the OKI Regional Council of Governments Board of Directors and Executive Committee. As the board knows, I already am the ICC member. I attend that. Mr. McCormick is my alternate. I've been very engaged in OKI and Mr. Loeb is as well. And that is an invaluable resource to the region with regard to federal and state transportation dollars. And it's good to have a place at the table down there. It's good, so.
Okay. So the motion would be for Mr. Wright to serve as the alternate to, to Mr. Loeb on, on the OKI Regional Council?
So moved.
Second?
Is there any?
I have none.
Discussion? Nope. Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Roll call? Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, number six, we're along here. Let's see, the contract authorization for a TIF. Mr. Wright, what do you, what can you tell us?
So actually what this is, this is a contract authorization to, motion to approve a tax increment financing developer agreement with G21 Properties LLC and executing the administrator to, or, or not executing the administrator, authorizing the administrator to execute that. Please don't execute me. I hope I got at least another 35 years in my mind. So this is a typical tax incentive agreement that we have, that we do for a lot of our TIF districts. These have some reimbursements for eligible infrastructure costs that we, so the way that that works, they pay the TIF. We make a hole in our obligations to the schools per the compensation agreement. We have some residual and then we're able to reimburse over time for some infrastructure improvements in that. And this agreement lays that forth, for that project. This is to help with some sanitary sewer costs and furtherance of that project. So pretty standard, gives me the authorization to execute it and would appreciate the board's support in that regard so we can keep that moving forward.
Okay, so I would like a motion to approve the TIF agreement with G21 Properties as it was just described by Mr. Wright.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell?
Roll call? Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number seven on the agenda, contract authorization intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Wright, explain that to us.
Yes, sir. So this is an intergovernmental agreement between Union Township and the Claremont County Transportation Improvement District for the Champion's Way Roadway Improvement Project, project, TID project 90820. This is an intergovernmental agreement, and this is the form of the agreement that we've used successfully with our partners at the Transportation Improvement District to construct, you know, critical public infrastructure, specifically, if I think back, one of the most successful projects that we had previously was the turn lane improvements and the, it was a separate project, the sewer line extension for Hamilton Safe, which we both advanced through the, through the TID to do that. And we achieved, you know, cost savings with that. We achieved, they helped us with the bidding. Well, I don't know if we achieved full cost savings, but we don't have to pay for a construction manager because it's their people. Mr. Taylor works with that. They help us bid it, the whole nine yards. We're basically just funding it, and they manage that for us. And so in this, this intergovernmental agreement would be for the road, stormwater, and water lines to advance the Champion's Way roadway project, which serves the 31 acres on Round Bottom with contingency, you know, the total estimated construction cost. And that's one of the things that I tried to hit the ground running with. Mr. Taylor did a great job, you know, in the interim capacity, getting the engineering work going on this. We're at 1.584 million and some change, and that's with 10% contingency on that. The TID will not ask us for funding until they bid it, because they may need to revise the agreement depending, I mean, that's one thing that we don't know, is competitive bidding. But this is our best guess based on the construction estimates. I mean, these are live time through 10 days ago, so. So with that, I need a motion to authorize the board to enter into the intergovernmental agreement 2024-01 and authorize me to negotiate, finalize any remaining terms, specific modifications as required by the parties, and to sign it so we can get this thing off and running and get it bid.
Some move.
Some move. Second.
Great. Any discussion?
I have none.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're on Section C of the legislative agenda. The first item on here is Resolution 2024-04. I would need a motion to adopt the Personnel Policy Manual and make that effective on June 1. Once we get a motion, we'll have, Mr. Wright will describe what that is.
2023.
Yes.
Did I say the wrong date again?
It's okay.
Retroactive.
Retroactive to June 1, 2023.
Some move. Second.
Okay. Mr. Wright, would you please explain?
Sure. Yep. So this resolution is just some housekeeping items to reflect current hiring practices. We have amendments to Section 1.06. This moves the amendment or modification affecting employee benefit number upward. Traditionally, that number had been fixed based on the administrator's purchasing policy, or at least that's the best rationale that I would have it in there. I can't speak with 100% certainty because I wasn't here when we wrote the first one, but I've, we've never really seen it to change it. But when you look through a document, you try to do some housekeeping. So we pushed that up to $10,000. There's some modifications, Section 3.02 regarding probationary employees and some allotments and vacation periods. There is the addition of, really, we're adding to the, it's really only one net holiday because the federal government recognizes Juneteenth, so that just gets put into the policy manual. I will point out that it does also include Columbus Day. All the bargaining units have Columbus Day. There's like seven people manning the ship on Columbus Day. You'll probably find me in the office there, but I'll be the lone soldier in that. And it's really, you're not, that just impacts your non-bargaining exempt employees. So with that, it's really an equity issue in that regard. We have a couple other items with regard to vacation leave, just sort of adjusting and modernizing that. And then sick and injury leave, allowing for recognizing that people have some service time credit with qualifying employers. So really, a lot of housekeeping. We can, I can dive into the red line of it specifically, but that's really the impact. It's going to be a nominal impact for us, quite frankly, so.
Okay. We had a motion, a second, or any questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I have none.
Yep. Mr. Dills?
Yeah.
We're all good?
Just good job, Mr. Wright, on recognizing that and getting it going. So good job.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item on the legislative agenda is Resolution 2024-05. Mr. Wright, would you explain that, please?
Yes, sir. So this is a form resolution that we have, that we've done every time we do an expenditure from the ARPA funds. This has been recommended to us, both by council and by our, I believe, our, is it our accountant as well? The auditor state wants to see these too.
That's correct.
So, and Mr. Campbell does a great job making sure we stay, we stay on top of that. Four exhibits, police cruisers are Exhibit A, 131, 715, $131,715. Motorola Fire Police Department radios, 333,079. 11, Bauer self-controlled breathing apparatus compressor, Class 2 filling station and cascade system for Station 49. So that's $54,583.26 on Exhibit C. And the Bauer self-contained air compressor and cascade filling system for Station 52, which is another $33,992.38. This almost fully encumbers, I say almost fully encumbers our remaining ARPA funds. We do have some money that is coming back in through a grant, but we have to file an amended certificate first. Estimated resources, get that approved by the Budget Commission. Once you get the certificate back, then you can then file an amended appropriations resolution. You file that, then we can move to encumber that. So we're trying to get that all wrapped up before the hard stop on 12/31/2024. So use it or lose it.
So what would, what would that motion look like for this?
So that motion's going to be, if you want to read the whole thing there, and I think because it's federal money.
Just, oh, sorry.
Yeah. I would just say, just read the bold, say, "Adopt Resolution 2024-05, authorizing expenditure."
So on.
Yep, right.
Okay. Can I have some move?
Yes, some move.
That's a second. In a second?
Second.
In a second. Do we have any discussion?
Just very quickly, Mr. Wright, for next month's business meeting, can you make a note to give us an update on the ARPA funds and how much we have left in that account since public record? Can we discuss that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the third resolution on here is 2024-06. Mr. Wright, do you explain that, please?
Yes, sir. Just one point of clarification from Mr. Dills. So is that pre the grant reimbursement? Just what we have before they give us the authorization to encumber, what we get back from the state? I believe that was, is that the playground or is it the pickleball courts? Which one is it?
Both.
The reimbursement that we're waiting on?
Should be playground.
Playground.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So that, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker, Resolution 2024-06.
Yes, sir.
This is a simple resolution that is required by ORC 50355. ORC 503.55 documents the ability of the township offices to accept payments by financial transaction devices for township expenses. And so this resolution just walks literally right down the roadmap that the state legislature put forth for townships in using financial transaction devices, e.g., what does that mean? Online credit card payments or credit card payments. This gives us the ability to put this at all of our township facilities, to take care of our fees for zoning, take care of our fees for, I don't know if the police department has fees or not. Cemetery is a big one, because those are big-ticket items for people, deeds, you know, plot purchases and all that. Gives people another way to pay. So with that, resolution's pretty inclusive. It's anybody and everybody, and we get the ability to make the determination how we deploy that moving forward. So with that, I would respectfully request the board's approval of Resolution 2024-06.
Yes, I'd like a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-06, authorizing acceptance of payments of financial transaction devices for township expenses pursuant to Higher Business Code, Section 503.55.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. I mean, it's, shouldn't be, but it's one of those things I get, I'm happy to see move forward and get done. I feel like for the longest time, from the first time I heard someone's story about trying to make a reservation and having to go to the cemetery, usually I'm going to share the story with you, go to the cemetery and then come up here to pay, and then they had to have the right type of payment, they didn't have it. And so anyway, streamlining that, being a better service to our, to the public and, and our customers, frankly. So we got to be able to take credit cards. So there we go.
Yeah. Mr. Dills, I have?
All good.
Yeah, I have a question. So what about the merchant fees associated with taking credit cards?
So, you know, we have to, so there's two parts to the resolution. So the resolution actually, there's a $5 per transaction. The fiscal officer has the authorization and the resolution to provide for that. I have mixed feelings on that. In my mind, I feel like that's a cost of doing business, and we should just, if we need to raise our fees or adjust them, we should do them periodically. But I didn't want to strip the ability to be able to recoup up, you know, a nominal fee of $5 if we need to. Now, importantly, the code requires that if you do charge a surcharge, you have to post notice of it. And there's some specific provisions in that. So there's some of that, and administrative, you know, housekeeping and training your folks to make sure that, you know, they advise people of that. And yeah, so we have the ability to, per the resolution, it's set at $5. I didn't want to go on a percentage. I just, it's easier for us to just fix the number and go from there. It's typically not going to be any more than that, and it's really just a cost of doing business.
So that $5 is part of the resolution?
It gives the fiscal officer the ability to charge it.
Okay, so he'll make that decision?
He'll make that decision.
Okay. That's all I have. Anything else, John?
Yes. For the record, Mr. Campbell, I 100% agree, Mr. Wright, cost of doing business. I disagree with charging the $5, but that's just me. So for the record.
Okay. Anything else?
Overall, this just gives them the authority to basically take that next step and then implement.
I'll leave it up to Mr. Campbell, but just, just letting you know where I stand. So it's okay either way.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right. We had a motion, we had a second. Mr. Campbell, what's the roll call, please?
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item number 4 is Resolution 2024-07. Mr. Wright, please explain.
Yes, sir. And I'll point out, so my text underneath the title excluded the 180 days because I'm trying to limit the number of characters. I didn't want to go over four pages for the agenda. But, so this is a resolution that would impose a continuing moratorium on the establishment or commencement of medical and recreational marijuana cultivators, processors, and retail dispensaries for a period of 180 days and to clear an emergency. I guess I probably could have afforded those additional seven characters, but I made an executive decision on that. So, so basically, in that, we have, this moratorium is a standard form of moratorium, worked with our legal counsel. It actually blends the medical and the recreational, as you know, with the vote, the recent passage or whatever of that. That is sort of coming up upon us. And the reason why I requested this is because I want, and Mr. McCormick's done a great job on developing in a relatively short period of time, some text amendments, which the board will subsequently see this evening to establish some reasonable time, manner, place, and review restrictions for both medical and recreational marijuana in that. So this, I know that it's a lot. I don't like to continue to extend, extend, extend. I'd ask for one more 180-day period so we can let the text amendment process play out with the zoning commission and trustees. And then that process is, and then, you know, there's, and the reason why that's so long is because it's typically 30 days to get in front of the zoning commission, 30 days to get in front of the trustees, and then a 30-day, you know, runout period on the referendum on anything that happens. So, you know, 180 days, I, in case there's any discussion in that, any process. So that, I would respectfully request that the board adopt the resolution to extend the moratorium for 180 days to give us time to push text amendments forward.
Okay. So Logue, would you like to make that motion as described by Mr. Wright?
So, some move.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I just know I said I wanted to vote next month on this, but based off, in light of that information, I agree pushing, kicking the can down the road. Lord willing, hopefully one more time, and we can make a final decision, so.
The word was changed in the past year.
That's all I got to say.
Okay.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number 5 is Resolution 2024-08. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. So Resolution 2024-08, this is a standard resolution we utilize to initiate a text amendment to the zoning resolution. That can be done one of three ways: by way of application, by a party outside, by motion to the zoning commission, or by resolution to the trustees. Historically, in my tenure, we've always done it vis-à-vis the resolution by the trustees. And so I think that's best practice. You guys get to initiate it, and then it moves forward with, with appropriate speed. So these are the text amendments to the, that's sort of a company or backstop, the moratorium. And I'll let Mr. McCormick keep prepared a short memo to sort of walk through with the board, just to give you an idea what the, what the proposed text amendment is looking.
Yes, so the one-page memo here, in lieu of prohibiting these uses further in the future, we prepared a draft text that would allow the medical, state-licensed medical and recreational marijuana, marijuana-related uses as conditional uses in the B1 zoning districts for dispensaries and test labs, and for conditional uses in the industrial zoning districts for the cultivators and processors. And we did this doing research and consulting our legal counsel. We felt like we put together a pretty good draft set of ordinances. We have minimum distances between certain uses, as provides for in the code, landscaping screening provisions, lighting prohibits drive-throughs, limits hours of operations, required jets or participation in impact fees. We have a max of two locations in the commercial districts for those types of facilities I mentioned earlier, and three locations in the industrial districts. So you're looking at changes potentially to Article 6 for those uses, and Article 10 for the time period for discontinued or abandoned nonconforming uses in structures, reducing that timeframe from two years to one, and then some definitions in Appendix A. And those are the, that's the summary of the proposed changes.
And just to reiterate on Mr. McCormick's point, so the conditional use process, the most important part of the conditional use process is it's not automatic, and there's a public hearing involved. And then they have to meet those other conditions. And the other component is that there is a, this sort of resets the landscape if these resolutions, if these, these amendments were to be approved, sort of resets it, and then allows us to, you know, be able to, to do some things to enhance both existing and/or future. And it's going to be, you know, ultimately with conditional use, the community gets to provide feedback vis-à-vis the public hearing process before a quasi-judicial body with the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's really why this process was driven that way. It was a very effective process for us. I know at the city, we use conditional uses very frequently. We've used them here less so because we also have the overlay district, but I think that in this regard, these are only going to go through the, these are specifically called out as conditional uses, so.
Sounds good.
All right. So can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-08, initiating a zoning text amendment to the Union Township zoning resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I was just going to say, I strongly support public participation and that involvement. And also, like Mr. Wright, you bring in that perspective from the city, too, as far as how conditional use has been used, and bringing that, bringing that here.
Yeah. Mr. McCormick, great job. A lot, you did a lot there. Thank you very much. And then also, good thinking, Mr. Wright, because it also utilizes our zoning board more as well. So, love it. I'm in full support of it.
All right. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so number 6 on here is Resolution 2024-09. Mr. Campbell, would you like to describe the then-announced certificate?
Yes, sir, I would. This is a resolution authorizing a then-announced certificate. I'm asking you to adopt Resolution 2024-09, authorizing the township fiscal officer to issue a then-announced certificate for payment of expenditures for $4,188 to Archives Social.
Okay. Could I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-09, authorizing the township fiscal officer to issue a then-announced certificate for payment of expenditures?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number 7, that's the last one on here, Resolution 2024-10. What, Mr. Wright, what's going on here?
So this is a property that was brought to me by Mr. McCormick and Mr. Berkey late last week. It's been subject to pending enforcement. 4007 Bach Buxton Road, as you can see in the photos. The conditions are pretty deplorable, just piles of just junk everywhere, pallets, all kinds of things. So is the board aware, we utilize the nuisance process to clean these things up when property owners fail to take heed of our notices to clean them up? And this gives us the ability to go in after us prescribe, you know, legal notice and, and mailing notice period, and take action if they continue to be recalcitrant and, you know, or rebuff our efforts to get it cleaned up voluntarily.
Is that a shuttered business?
Um, I'm not sure. I don't know if it's, if they're shuttered or what. I can tell you they're delinquent on their taxes, $11,000.
Yeah.
In addition to, you know, almost $9,000 in addition this year. So my guess is the lights are off, nobody's home.
Yeah. I was, I stopped by and, I didn't knock any doors, but I just kind of walked around the property, looked around, and it looked like nobody was home.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the place was a mess. I concur. Okay, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-10, authorizing the abatement and the removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash, and debris pursuant to Section 505.87 of the Higher Business Code at the address of 4007 Bach Buxton Road.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Comments from board members. Mr. Logue? Lead us off.
Yeah, hey, just a couple things. One, one that came up during tonight's meeting, wanted to ask Chief Reese. So public health, you know, I've heard this pitch as an idea before, but I've never, I actually haven't realized it in action somewhere. They're giving out fentanyl test strips annually, and 1,876 were given out, I guess, apparently last year. And do we cross paths with fentanyl test strips? I would imagine if we're picking up, you know, drug users, et cetera, occasionally, there's a test strip. Have we seen that or not? Or am I misinterpreting what is in the health report?
Nothing that's been reported to me by our supervisors or officers.
Okay. I'm just curious, like what the, I guess, the push out of that. And just, I, I question the precedence as well. It's part of their harm reduction program. I get that, but it's just, is, Mr. Wright, do you recall how much, how much funding we give support to public health? I mean, $750,000 a year is from villages, townships, et cetera, so.
I'd have to look at our, I could pull an expense. I mean, it's been a couple years since I've looked at it.
Yeah, okay.
But if, if, I mean, Mr. Campbell, you know off the top of your head, we have to look at to look at, I could pull an expense trail and certainly advise the board if.
It's a significant number.
Because we, I mean, yeah.
Six figures.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, yeah, it's, I recall.
I want to say it's like $190,000.
That's.
And I might, I'm going off the cuff, but it's, it's close to $200,000.
It's specific.
Our part.
About two years ago, I, I, I remember thinking that it was about 170, so. So, yeah, it's significant. But I don't know how much voice we, you know, we had people talking to us tonight. I don't know how much true voice we have on that, when they just ask for funding and support. Yes, there's a lot of great things, the program is needed and does, but, you know, frankly, I guess I'd rather, you know, see, you know, more, more support and services for families and kids, and those type of tangible things. But, just, just, just something I wanted to share, I guess, 1,876 fentanyl test strips. I mean, that's a policy and a precedent to be set. It was, it was a, so, next step, anyway. We have had, in the community, I'll say greater community, a few new school board members. And for a long time, I've been very interested in trying to kick an idea of like a joint session, especially West Claremont's very large for us. We also do a lot of funding with the city of, with Milford Schools. So, I just want to put that on the table, that we continue to maybe look at opportunities, how our board could have a joint board session with, with West Claremont, and if it's Milford, and, and talk about what agenda or discussion topic could be there. But I think that having informal and formal interactions are, are good, and good for the community overall. So, that's, that's the primary things I wanted to share with the board for tonight. And, Mr. Wright, just again, thanks. You, you gave us a full meeting, and, and Mr. Chairman, I think, is one of the first full, at least full agenda meetings that you ran us through, so, good work.
Yeah, this, thank you. I think it's like the first or second business meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we had one in January, so second business meeting.
As far as a full, as far as a full agenda, I know, a pretty full agenda, so, yeah.
Spend some time reading through it, preparing for it. Mr. Dills.
Gentlemen, we, we agreed on all, everything tonight.
No two-to-one votes this time.
We didn't have any two-to-one votes this time.
Well, the meeting's not over yet.
It's not over yet. Mr. Wright, great job on the, on the, on the fire chief process. For you to come in and right out of the gate have to hire a new fire, recommend to hire a new fire chief, that's not easy, and I just want to say, great job along with everything else on your plate. So, just well done there. I know that wasn't easy, but you did a great job on the, to handle the process. Yeah, I went to the OTA conference up in Columbus, went to a couple classes, went to an AI class, went to a medical marijuana class about, you know, learning about state law, and that was great. But what was really the neat part was the after-hours and, and socializing with other township trustees in the state of Ohio. I tried my best to connect with a lot of them in Claremont. And I'll tell you this, gentlemen, we, we are, we're very blessed. Union Township is. There are some townships that are, that are struggling hard, and so, it was just very eye-opening for me to hear these other townships, how, how much they're struggling from, from all areas that you could think of. And so, just maybe just realize that we're, we're very fortunate here in UT. But I'll tell you, I'll leave with this. My, my confidence right now in, in our entire leadership team, I mean, Chief Reese, love his style, love his policing, and I think you're, you're doing a great job. I, I love our new fire chief, and I can't wait to see where that goes. Corey Wright, I, I, I don't like, I said this to you one time, 100 times, I don't like the term administrator. You're the CEO, you're the president of the township, and what you do, my, yeah, very confident. And so, you know, Mr. McCormick and our zoning, our service department, and in, I think 2024 is going to be an awesome year, that the construction's going to be darn near wrapped up by the end of this year. We've got some cool businesses that Mr. Wright's working on to get them to come in here, and, and I think the residents are going to love. Our core group right now is as strong as it's been in my two years, and, and I love it. And I love the direction we're going. And so, just, yeah, my confidence in, in overall UT, this is going to be a great fun year. So, I'll leave it with that. Mr. Becker.
Yeah. Hey, ditto's to that. I guess all I want to say is, just regarding Mr. Wright, I have an extraordinary comfort level.
It's peace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there's things I used to worry about that I don't worry about anymore. You, you've earned my trust, and I, I really appreciate it. You've hit the ground running here. You've been, you know, beyond 100%. And it, it shows, you're, you're highly respected in the community. I just had some discussions this afternoon on, about you with, with another member of the community, and everybody's just very impressed, and glad to have you back. And nobody appears happier than I am. That's all I have. Anything, anything that's not final there? All right. Upcoming events. Fire Department is hosting a CPR First Aid Class on March the 2nd from 9:00 to noon. However, there's no spots available. Is there a, a website that anybody, or a phone call maybe to get on a waiting list in case any spots open up?
Yeah, they can call the Fire Department administrative offices.
Okay.
And I think we'll be able to, to help them there and put their name on a waiting list or whatever, and, and, or get ahold of, you know, one of the command staff. But, so, I would encourage them to do that.
Fine, thank you. Okay, then, the last thing here for events is, the Board of Trustees' next meeting will be March 12th at 6:00 PM. Okay, so folks, we're going to go into executive session. We're, you know, we got a number of things to talk about. When we come back out here, we're simply going to adjourn. There's going to be no, no, no votes, no, no action taken. After discussing with our law director how to go into executive session, I was advised, I have to read this word for word, dot in the i's crossed and a t's. So, if you want to get up and leave now, go at it. Otherwise, you might be falling asleep while I'm going through all this.
So, is that probably me and Mr. Lo as well?
[laughing]
Just kidding.
Okay, so, I will like to have a motion to enter into executive session for three categories here. This is going to be a while. The first one, to consider the employment compensation and/or dismissal of a public employee or official pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121-22G1. That was an easy one. The second one, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 121-22G2. And now, the third one, it goes for two-thirds of a page. To consider confidential, y'all still here? Are you asleep out there yet? Okay. To consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance provided that both of the following conditions apply. A, the information is directly related to the request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of Chapter 715, 725, 1724, or 1728, or Sections 707.07, 3735.67.
Mr. Becker, excuse me, 701.
Did I say something wrong?
Yes, 701.
701.
What did I, what did I say?
You said 707.
707?
707.
Oh, it's 701.07?
Yes, sir.
I think I'm trying to get in a hurry here. I'm falling asleep. All right. Section 7, thank you for, for correcting me there. 701.07, 3735.67, 2, I guess there's a range of them, 3735.70, comma, 5709.40, 2, 5709.43, comma, 5709.61, 2, 5709.69, comma, 5709.73, 2, 5709.75, or 5709.77 to 5709.81 of the Ohio Vice Code, or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project, and B, a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section Would you like me to repeat all that, Mr. Lo, or you, can you make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Dills.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
We're going to executive session at 8:15 PM.
Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're going to do executive session at eight fifteen P. M.
I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have none.
Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 9:40 PM.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 9:40 PM.